Okay, ladies and gentlemen, my computer says it's four. So I'll open the regularly scheduled July meeting of the Jefferson County Planning Board. I can count seven of our board members, so we have a quorum. Andy, will you take care of the the rest of the whivers on, you know, introduce them or make a record of who's on the conference with us?
Yeah, I'll try and we're we're doing that here in the office too, but I want to announce that for those who are on the call and the name isn't clear, you need to put your name in the chat so we can keep a record of all the people on the call, including the board members. And also it's going to be recorded per the state requirements. And for any applicants that are on the call, make sure you again, put your name in the chat so we know that you'll be offered a chance to speak during that time with that application.
How do you put it in the chat when you're on the phone?
Um, there's a little button on the right that says chat with everyone, so you click on that. Oh, when you're on the phone, um, well, maybe just tell us.
Okay, I'm getting a message. Craig Fox has raised his hand. Greg, did you want to say something? No, he doesn't have his microphone on, so.
Okay, so I do know the person that just spoke, his name is John Bellinger. He's one of the applicants and he wants to speak during his time, so just so everybody knows.
Okay. Uh, all right. First order of business is the approval of the June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Make a motion that be accepted. All those in favor or any opposed? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Minutes are accepted. Okay, communications, Andy?
Um, yes, we did get one. One letter or correspondence from a neighbor of the French Creek Marina Project from a few months ago that we saw. And she was writing a letter in opposition to that process. The village reviewed it again with some changes. She was very concerned that we should look at it again. And I just, I forgot to send that out to you guys, so I'm going to send it probably tomorrow morning. Okay, so it's not on any current business that we have.
Okay, well, I I would just, you know, say respond back to her, then her first line of communications ought to be back to the town. You know, unless there's been a major change in the project, I think it ought to be up to the town to determine whether it needs review again or not.
Uh, yeah, I mean, not to get into it, but they've added a third house that they're taking down and adding more park, you know, it is some changes, so I see her point, but if the village didn't refer it back to us to make that decision, whether it's major or minor, then we're sort of out of the loop. And I explained to that to her on the phone, but the next day we got a twenty-six page letter, so.
You got a twenty-six page letter?
Yes.
From that one applicant?
Uh, no, from a neighbor of of the project.
Twenty-six pages?
Yes. So I'm sorry, I just forgot to send it out. We got it last week.
Okay, well, without any other thoughts, let's table it then until the next meeting when we've all got a chance to to read it and maybe you can get a response back from the village there too, Andy.
Well, I've asked the zoning officer and in writing through email, I you know, I kind of thought he would respond, he hasn't, so you know, again, it's sort of not in our court. But we can try again.
Okay, well. Put it on the agenda for next month then.
Okay.
Okay. Are any other comments? Addressed to the board for any other agenda, not agenda items, but anything, just our general conduct or anything? No? Okay. All right, moving right along to new business then. Section two thirty-nine M referrals. Uh, Andy, how are we going to go in order or who came first or what?
Well, Mr. Ballinger is, I believe he was on the call first, so I figured we'd do Sarah's project, starting with his and do those three and then and she may have other applicants on and then I'll do mine afterward. I don't, I'm not aware of any on mine, so that's what we'll do, her three and then mine.
All right, what what number is that then Sarah going to start with?
Number four.
Number four.
Okay, can you hear me?
Everybody got their staff conferences notes that they show up in your email today?
Yes.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, I'm starting out with, I guess it is number four. It's the City of Watertown Zone Change. Um, five dash twenty-two. Um, I am getting a little bit of feedback, like on my phone, it's kind of garbled, so I hope you can hear me, but if you're not muted, please mute yourself. Um, star six, thanks. Um. So this is an application for a zone, to rezone property located at one zero zero eight Glenn Street from Residence B to commercial zoning. Um, the property is located on the north side of Glenn Street, which is within five hundred feet of Route Three, which is Arsenal Street in the city. Um, it's between Duffy and Dorsey, and that's Glenn Street. I'll look at the next slide, I can probably show it to you better. Um, okay, here's Glenn Street, here's Arsenal Street, and then Duffy is on the west side and Dorsey is on the east side. Uh, up in this corner is the Japanese Hibachi.
Oh, okay.
Restaurant. Um, this is a barber shop. It looks like a house with a barber shop. This is a vacant lot that the applicant also owns. And this is Valvoline Auto, and this is a single family home. So this property at one zero zero eight Glenn Street is immediately adjacent to one zero one five Arsenal Street. Like I said, Mr. Ballinger also owns this. You can see the surrounding land uses. I just told you about the commercial ones on Arsenal, and then these are all single family homes on Duffy and Dorsey and a vacant lot back here on Glenn Street. And across Glenn Street, you have more single family homes. Um, the purpose of this zone change is to allow the applicant to construct a driveway for egress purposes only onto Glenn Street from this parcel that he owns on Arsenal Street, which is called ten fifteen Arsenal. Let's see, um, this this parcel, the Arsenal Street parcel up here is forty-two feet wide. As is the parcel to the west, which is the barber shop, is also forty-two feet wide. Um, historically, these two parcels both had houses on them and they shared a driveway, which is actually on the west, the barber shop property. And since the applicant purchased this, this property, he has been unable to secure an agreement with the barber shop property to use that driveway. And in the meanwhile, he also, he demoed his building. Um, so he could build a new commercial building. Um, New York State DOT staff indicated to us that in order to build a two driveway, um, like in and out driveway in this area, you'd have to have twenty-two feet in width with five feet setbacks. So that'd be a total of thirty-two feet, which the parcel does have, because I indicated that was forty-two feet. However, there is a telephone pole in the middle of this parcel, which would have to be relocated to accommodate a new two-way driveway. Um, and that would be at the cost of the applicant if he so chose to go that route. If he wanted to do just a one-way in with the DOT, it would only be a twelve-foot requirement. And then perhaps he could do that without relocating the telephone pole. But if you do a one-way in, you gotta exit somehow. Um, so that again was why he bought this property to the rear, so that eventually the commercial users could exit through through this property onto Glenn Street and then go back out on Arsenal. Um. So I said, as I originally said, the applicant purchased this property to the south on Glenn Street in order to provide egress to this parcel on Arsenal. Um. This is because he found out from the city that you cannot use a residentially zoned property as access to a commercial property. So that's why he needs to, or he's requesting to change the zoning for this property to commercial, so that he can have the driveway. Hopefully that makes sense. Um. So this is the zoning map. Arsenal Street's up at the top. This is Glenn Street in the middle, and you have Duffy on the left and Dorsey on the right. This is the subject parcel that he wants to change the zoning for. Um, the light brown zoning is Residence B. You can see it pretty much goes with all these single family homes, except for this these single family homes along Dorsey. The red is own commercial. It does go along with all the commercial properties and it includes these single family homes, the first three on Dorsey. Um, so if he was to get the zone change approved, the red would extend down onto this parcel here. The city comprehensive plan identifies this whole block as commercial. And the city is in the process of a major zoning update for both the text, like the zoning law and the map. And the committee that's responsible for updating the zoning um, has reviewed this block in particular. And they're recommending that the residential zoning stay put as residential and the commercial zoning stay put as commercial, because they've now realized that there are a lot of single family homes around here. Um, the city planning board recently reviewed this project and they recommended denial of the requested zone change by a vote of five to zero. Um, the zone change request will go on to the city council next month for its final determination. And on Monday, the applicant submitted a site plan depicting his development intentions for the two parcels. He submitted that to the city, which they forwarded on to us, but we decided not to display the site plan. Um, one, because the city planning board did not actually review the site plan. And two, because this request is for a zone change only, um, it's not for any actual development, so it's not related to the site plan. Um, in terms of comments, we say New York State law, city law requires zoning amendments to be made in accordance with a comprehensive plan. The local board should ensure that this amendment is consistent with the current plan for the city, which is a current current commercial designation for the entire block. And then for local comments, we said the local board should also consider that the proposed zoning map update for this area call for a residential designation in this area. Um, and the applicant is online, and if you have any questions for me, um, let me know, or otherwise, I believe the applicant has indicated he wants to speak. Oh, I'm sorry, I have more photos, sorry. Um, this is Arsenal Street. You can see Valvoline is on the left. This is the subject parcel. Um, the house was demoed a couple of years ago, and this is the barber shop towards the right. Uh, this is just another view of the Arsenal Street project. The Glenn Street project is behind it in the woods back there. That's where the zone change is. This is a picture, I'm over in the thousand block of Glenn Street looking towards Arsenal. You can see on the left, there is a single family home that's actually over on Duffy. And this, I just kind of went down the street a little bit. You can see on the far right, you can see some residential development that's on Dorsey. And again, vacant land on Glenn going back up towards Arsenal where the applicant would like to change the zoning and put his egress driveway. Okay, now I'm caught up. Okay, any questions for me?
Well, let the applicant speak and then.
Okay. I think, um, John, if you haven't already, just hit mute yourself.
Okay. Um, was that, was that Sarah speaking?
Yes.
Yes.
Sarah, you did a very good job of explaining everything. Um, she she put it out there pretty well. Um, one thing I would say, there's a few things, but the first thing I'd say is about the planning board. Um, one thing they complained about, uh, two, three times during during that meeting was that, um, they wish there was a site plan, um, because they didn't see how that long narrow strip was going to work. So what I did after the meeting was, um, go to an engineer and have him drop that that site plan. And I turned it into the city, um, yesterday. And, um, that is, they're going to forward that on to the city council to make the final determination. Um, so that's why that was, I went to the expense of doing that. Because they they just, they they mentioned that two or three times at least that, um, we don't see what you could do with this property and yada, yada, yada. So that's why that site plan, that's where that came from. Um, but it's a, it's a pretty well-drawn-out site plan. Um, it makes well use of the property, safe use. And to get to my use of, again, I just want to use that back property. And, um, I say right on my new cover letter, um, that, um, and I said it on my cover letter that you used to have too, that that's never going to be used for a commercial building. It's only going to be used for this, uh, drive, this one-way drive, which is only going to be an exit. Um, the building in there isn't, isn't really big. It's twenty-one feet by sixty-two feet, thirteen hundred and some odd square feet. Um, so there's not going to be a tremendous amount of traffic. Um, I also mentioned, um, in my new cover letter and that previous cover letter, that I would erect two double-sided road signs fronting on Glenn Street. One on the east side of the driveway, which would be reading something like, not an entrance, exit use only. On the opposite side of those two signs, which could face the outgoing traffic on that driveway coming from Arsenal Street to the signs, they would, those signs would read left turn only. So they would have to go to Dorsey Street. Um, and that's a quicker way to Arsenal Street. And there are two residences, there are only two residences that front on Glenn Street. And they are further down, they're like the second half. And so going left would stay away from those two houses also. And right across from my driveway, that proposed driveway, is a vacant lot. Uh, and there's also a vacant lot on the Dorsey corner. So that house is set back in there. Um, also on Dorsey Street is the backside of, uh, the mustard seed, which is about a hundred and sixty-five feet deep or something like that. So, and then across the street from the mustard seed, um, is own commercial, there's a house on it, and then the one, um, right, right behind the, uh, corner lot on Arsenal Street is, uh, I think it's one fourteen Dorsey, and that is zone commercial. Um, and I've spoken to the, we, he, 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 the owner and myself, we've spoken several times, but the price keeps going up, uh, because I've been trying to buy that to make things easier, but it just hasn't been, hasn't worked out for four years. I've been trying to do this for four years. And between that person continually raising the price and, um, the one, the next door neighbor that won't let me use the driveway. Um, and I told, I told that person that, you know, I'll just, I'll pay for the whole thing. The driveway is not going to be moved. It's just going to be resurfaced for the parking lot. And I'll pay for the whole thing and I'll maintain it, so they'll never have to plow that again with the snow. But that person won't, won't budge and the other person, you know, originally, originally that house was, uh, he asked for a hundred and twenty, now it's up to three hundred and some odd, uh, three fifty. So that's what's going on there. So it leaves me in this really bad situation for four years of trying to develop this. It just hasn't been working that way. Um. I think there's something else here that I might want to mention. I don't, I can't bring anything to mind right now unless somebody has a question.
Any other staff members or board members got any questions?
I've got a question, Dave. This is Chris Schneider. Mr. Ballinger, what kind of a daily traffic use do you expect, uh, aggressing through that driveway? I mean, is it going to be something like the barber shop or is it going to be something like McDonald's?
Well, it's not going to be anything like McDonald's because the building is thirteen hundred square feet. And the franchises, they all want like at least a hundred feet on the road and they want like a deep lot, at least two, three hundred feet deep. In fact, you take McDonald's and NARV, you know, those are like two, three hundred feet deep, you know? So the franchise never would want to go in there. And, um, Valvoline is going to stay there. I've even talked to them about purchasing this property or they're, and then they say, no, we're staying here. They have a hundred and some odd, they were telling me a hundred and thirty some odd places, most of them, I guess, are in Canada. Um. So it's going to be, the only thing I can see is going to be one, possibly two. Um, two would break it up pretty small, though, you'd be under like, you know, seven hundred square feet for each place and that. But I, but there are requests for for small places like that for off, for offices, you know, I've had several requests for that before. But if it's just the one, one business that's thirteen hundred square feet, I mean, it just can't, it's going to have to be something like a barber shop or a nail salon or, um, something along those lines. It's not going to be a fast food place. It just, um, like I said, it just wouldn't support that. You need a bigger, bigger space than thirteen hundred square feet. Now, thirteen hundred square feet isn't odd. Um, you take the strip mall in front of, uh, the Salmon Run Mall, there's, I don't know, there's probably eight or ten places in there. They're all around that size. They're narrow, they're like fifteen, twenty feet wide and they go back, you know, not too far, fifty feet, something like that. Um, so that's a good size that people like, like to have. Um, you get up above that, you get more like two thousand, three thousand square feet and people, there ain't that many people that want to rent that size. And if they do, they normally put up their own building or but it's just, that's all it would be, is it just can't be, um, it's never going to be a franchise. It's going to be some little things that somebody's going to come along and just, oh, that'd be be great spot for my hair salon or or something along those lines.
My question related to the use, the amount of traffic that'd be coming out of that driveway. That was the question, not in respect to how many square feet, but is it going to be a lot of traffic? Drive, the driveway or not?
Well, well, it's, it's related to the size, but no, I don't see that at all. Um. It, it's just going to be like however many, uh, customers a day that a small nail salon would have or a barber shop would have. Um. Maybe a small retail store. Um, whatever we would want to fit in there, but it, uh, you really need larger places to to get the, to get a high traffic by them. And the city, the city, uh, figures out how many, how many parking spots you need relating to the square footage. And I, and I believe it's, uh, five parking spaces per thousand square feet. And so this is basically one point three, uh, thousand square feet. So they would want around eight parking spaces, but you know, in my new plan, we have laid out, um, something like ten or twelve off the top of my head. And of course, employees would be parking some of them, so, uh, you'd have, you know, eight or so that would be open to the public and, um, I just don't see the traffic flow. I can't calculate that, of course. I mean, state has a way of calculating on Arsenal Street how many, how much traffic there is or something like that, but yeah, I can't calculate that other than, other than by the size of the building and and number of parking spaces, so I just don't see it, um, going, uh, you know, it just isn't going to be a, not even a moderate traffic. It's going to be a light traffic.
My question, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Lisa? Is it, I know you can't speak for the rest of the council, but is it normal for the the council to overrule a ruling by your planning department?
Uh, well, I, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote because Monday we have a public hearing on this uh, as well as the resolution, so I, I would need to to recuse myself from the vote. I did, I did. I don't know, I hear some feedback, but I did attend the planning board meeting and there were a lot of questions about this. I think one thing that one thing that was asked or was mentioned was the type of commercial traffic or commercial trucks, commercial deliveries. If they can make that turn coming out of Glenn Street and then they're going down a side street, so that was that was a concern. I do know a couple property owners were there. One did speak on, the other one who used to own this land said that he sold the land basically asking that this stay residential. Um, so he was there to speak against it.
Um.
So I know that it was all, it was, you know, it was denied unanimously and, um, so it's you know, here we are. Um, so I think there were some, some concerns. There were a lot of questions about uh, the traffic coming in from Arsenal Street and how that would work, but I think, um, you know, Sarah explained it pretty well in terms of how that would all work, so.
Uh, Sarah, what, Sarah, wait a minute, what, if we follow your recommendation of a local concern only, what are we saying? We're in favor of the zoning change? Lisa or Sarah, are you there?
I was, I was muted and I needed a little feedback for everybody, so I apologize if you're hearing that too. Um. We're, we're basically saying that we think that the that there's not any countywide impact, so we think that it should just be locally, um, determined, if that makes sense?
Well, that was my question. I was just wondering if we're saying yes to the zoning change or no, but okay, I.
We're not saying yes or no. We're just saying we, we think it should be punted back into the city's court.
Okay, that's good. Okay. Any other staff people or board members? Because if we're passing a resolution that this is a project of local concern, as Sarah says, we're just bucking it back to the city for whatever action they want to take. Okay? All right, I'm going to make a motion then. Staff recommendation that this is a project of local concern only and to be returned to the applicant with our comments. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's that? George?
George.
Okay. Any, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay.
And, and one attention.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, Lisa abstained, okay.
Okay.
Okay, is that it, Sarah? Anything?
That's it on that project, um, so that applicant can, can leave us if he'd like. And then we'll go to Town of Watertown. Okay, I do have two in the Town of Watertown, and I know that the applicant is for the, for the second one is here. But just to keep the slideshow in order, I'm going to go with the, the first one. I don't know whether or not that applicant is on here. If that's okay with you guys, we'll start out with 7-22. Okay, this is site plan review to construct two self-storage units on State Route 12F. Just west of the intersection of 12F and 202, which actually does not show here. 202 goes down to Sam's Club, and then it goes into the backside of the industrial park. And we are on the north side of Route 12F, just west of that. See it better here. Okay, this is Route 12F, Coffeen Street. And this is going to be 202. Sam's Club would be way down at the bottom of the page. If you take 202 straight up, you're going to hit the Town of Watertown Fire Department, which is right on the edge of the industrial park. The parcel is this big, huge, large one. It is not part of the industrial park, according to the town. And it was recently subdivided into a parcel like over here and a parcel over here on Route 12F. And this parcel up here is Route 202, and we're going to see projects on both of these today. Uh-oh, I don't think my yellow lines. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, this is just a zoomed in portion. This is the Town of Watertown Fire Department. This is Route 202 into the industrial park. This is 12F, Coffeen Street Road. There's two single-family residents right here, and this project is going to be right around here, which is on 12F, north side. Oops, I got, got it wrong on this one. Okay. Well, that's the, the wrong slide. Got that screwed up. That's where the next project's going to be. But if you look, I can't see it on here. All right. This is, the, the property is over here. It's just west of the single-family residence. And this is Route 12F, looking towards the west. This is getting a little closer to the property. This is the site plan. Again, Route 12F is down here. The single-family homes are right here to the east. And the site is zone neighborhood commercial, which allows storage facilities with site plan review. There's going to be a new gravel, gravel area. It's, the entrance is paved onto Route 12. But the gravel will be extended 25 feet around the sides and in between the storage buildings and 30 feet to the rear. There'll be grass in the rest of the area. The storage buildings, they look like they're twin buildings. Each building is 40 feet by 200 feet. The lighting claims it's going to be dark sky compliant. These are called dwarf, dwarf alpine or mountain hemlock trees. And they, they pretty much go along the front and they go along the first part of each side of the property. The building, this is an example of what the building will look like. It looks like your typical steel siding, steel roof type mini storage, self-storage, whatever. This applicant, Grindstone Group, they've done multiple self-storage buildings in the county that I've reviewed. For comments, we have a highway work permit is required for access onto the state highway. A building permit is required from Jefferson County Code Office for the new buildings. The project site is located on the Black River Trail, which is part of the state's scenic byway program. So the local board should require adequate landscaping and buffering along the highway corridor as required in the town zoning law. And for local comments, the proposed office, I forgot about that. Proposed office is this little pink thing right here. The proposed office appears to be located in the required front yard. So the local board should request that the applicant redesign the project layout so that it meets or exceeds the requirements of the zoning law. And then in the neighborhood commercial district, the following criteria should be met according to their zoning law. Parking areas shall be to the rear or sides of structures. A landscape bumper area of 35 to 50 feet wide shall be required at the property frontline in order to screen structures from the main highway corridor. A pedestrian walkway is required to be located inside this, this front yard buffering. The project is located adjacent to a single-family residence. The zoning law states a landscape buffer area of 35 feet wide at the side and rear yards shall be required in order to mitigate impact between incompatible uses. They probably want to make sure that, that is definitely implemented along the, the single-family residence side, the east side. And shrubs and ground cover shall provide visual screens in all seasonings, seasons. And then signage shall be lower monument style, set off by appropriate landscaping at the base. And there's a sign proposed right here and a sign proposed right here, so that's two total. And according to the sign law, it appears that only one sign is allowed per site, while two are shown on this plan. And as I previously mentioned, I'll kind of say it again on both of these projects, the property was recently subdivided to include the creation of this property. The local board should ensure the applicant files a deed describing the new lot and a new parcel number is issued. In addition, the local board should ensure that the applicant has permission from the property owner to apply for the requested site plan review, if they don't technically own it already. Any questions on that one?
Any other board members?
Can we go into the Town of Watertown 8-22?
Want to finish this one up, Sarah.
Oh, you want to do a separate motion for that one?
Yeah, if we're, the two projects.
Both my Town of Watertown ones are going to be local concern only.
Yeah, okay, well.
You tell me.
We're, we're this far. Let's do it one at a time then.
Okay. All right.
Staff has made a recommendation this is a project of local concern only with comments to be returned to the applicant. Motion made. Any second? John Strong. Okay, good. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Raise a hand. Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay.
All right, next one is Town of Watertown 8-22. This is site plan review for a proposed multi-tenant building to be located on vacant land on County Route 202. We're in the same exact area that we just were in. Again, the same large parcel, but now we're going to be in the part that's subdivided, recently subdivided over here onto 202, and I, again, zooming in, it's right next to the fire station. It'll be right here, right north of these single-family homes. And I think, of course, I'm going to have the wrong slide. This was the lot that was created for the previous application. And I meant to put it, this lot over here is going to be this, but I got those confused. Sorry about that. This is photo. I'm over in the, like in the industrial park and I am facing west. Fire station is on my right, and this is the vacant land and the parcel right here for the multi-tenant building. And again, now I'm on 202, kind of facing northwest, looking towards the fire station. And this is the property on the left side. And this is the south end of the property, as it kind of abuts against the single-family homes. Again, taken from 202. So this is a 2.9 acre parcel that was just subdivided within the last couple of months off this, off the large parcel that you saw. The site is zone neighborhood commercial. This is a proposed multi-tenant building. The plan is to have a hair salon and a CrossFit gym that Mr. Vecchio is proposing. The building will be 60 feet by 140 feet for a total of 8,400 square feet. The CrossFit gym part of it should be 7,400 square feet, and the hair salon should be 1,000 square feet. The hair salon will be on the left side when you walk in. The CrossFit will be on the right side when you walk in. So as you can see, the building is, I mean, they're going to have a new driveway onto Route 202 to access it. This will all be paved all along here. All this parking in the front will be paved. There's like a dash line, maybe you can see it right there. After the dash line, that'll be gravel. And that gravel leads you back to some parking back here and an enclosed screened-in trash enclosure. But this part up here is paved and the part over here is paved. This pink thing is a guardrail because there is a little bit of a drop in elevation. The site does drain that way, like towards the southwest. Let's see, there are, there should be 38 parking spaces, and they are actually 10 feet by 20 feet each, two of which are handicapped in the front. It says the site work and the foundation should be completed this fall. And the building shell and the CrossFit relocation should be completed as soon as possible while commencing in the spring of 2023. And then the hair salon will be built out after they complete the CrossFit gym. There are going to be wall pack lights along the building, and there's going to be two lights in the parking lot, pole-mounted lights. They're supposed to be dark sky compliant. The CrossFit gym is proposed to be open from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. The patrons would access it via key fob that they would have, and then the hair salon would be open, you know, depending on the appointment, of the appointments. There are seven coniferous trees planted along the front. They indicated that they would be blue Colorado spruce, right there. That little pink thing right there is a transformer. And there are associated assorted shrubs planted along the building foundation in the front. For county and state comments, we have a work permit. Work permit is required from Jefferson County Highway Department for the access onto the county highway. Building permit is required from Jefferson County Code Office. For local comments, in the neighborhood commercial zoning district, the following criteria should be met. Parking areas should, shall be to the rear or sides of structures as required by the zoning law. A landscape buffer area of 35 to 50 feet wide shall be required at the property frontline in order to screen structures from the main highway corridor. A pedestrian walkway is required within that 35 to 50 foot wide landscape buffer along the highway corridor. Signage shall be lower monument style, set off by appropriate landscaping at the base. And then the same comment we had with the previous application. The property was recently subdivided to include the creation of this property. The local board should ensure the applicant files a deed describing the new lot and that a new parcel number is issued. In addition, the local board should ensure the applicant has permission from the property owner, if he's not already the owner, to apply for the requested site plan review. Any questions on that one?
Any board members?
And I think Mr. Vecchio is in the audience. I don't know if he wants to talk or not, but if we had specific questions.
Anybody?
He, he was. He was clicking on and off. I, I don't see him now.
Okay. Well, I'll just make one comment in regard to the subdivisions. Town law requires them to be filed within 30 days of the, the application. If not, then the subdivision doesn't exist anymore. So the town makes sure they, they file it within 30 days. Okay, I'm going to make a motion then. Motion is made. Staff has made a recommendation that this is a project of local concern only with our comments to be returned to the applicant. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Charlene? Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Okay. You done, Sarah?
Yes, I think I am done.
Okay, good. Good job. Moving right along then. Andy?
Yes, just clicking, just getting in here. Okay, so do we see the?
Numerical order, one, two, three?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we see the main list of projects?
Yep.
Okay. So the first one is the Village of Alexandria Bay is proposing a sign, a set of sign regulations to be included in their zoning law. And it's a village-wide proposal and it's considered a zoning tax amendment. We're seeing it because it occurs, affects land uses along state, county, and county roads and municipal boundaries. And currently their sign law consists of a few sentences found throughout their zoning and three definitions. And at the moment, the signs are reviewed by the village board with little to no criteria. So this effort is to have a complete set of sign regulations and have them be reviewed by the planning board, including, it also includes temporary signs, and most of those are allowed, except sandwich board signs. Those are reviewed by the zoning officer. So it's, it's, it's something that we mailed out, or, yeah, we mailed out to the members ahead of time. So hopefully at least some of you had a chance to look at it. We, our office provided technical assistance and is still doing so with, with the village. We are also, it's part of a zoning update process. After we did a comprehensive plan, we were working on a zoning update. And then they had some consternation with a sign application last summer, I think it was, or last fall. And then we sort of switched gears on the zoning amendment and went full force into a, a sign law. So here we are nine or 10 months later, and this is what is the result of that. And if you have a chance to look at it, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of meat and potatoes in there, but there, there may be a few things that need to be tweaked or fixed or addressed because it's very difficult to write a sign law for a village that has had little to no rules for a long time. So we tried to incorporate as many things as we could to, so it's, it's a bit confusing at times, but... So I want to set the stage for the context at least a little bit. So we have some usual signs along Route 12 that are associated with businesses such as the bank and Kenny's and so on. Those are your typical freestanding signs, so the law will address those moving forward. Then this is a photo on James Street, their main downtown area, which has projecting signs. It has wall signs, window signs, flags, sandwich boards, some older signs, some newer signs. So there's a lot of things going on with signs. So the village felt strongly in the comprehensive plan and the survey process, and then moving into this process, that they want to address signs and try to make, make it a better situation with the signs. So here's another shot showing a wall sign and some sandwich board signs and a projecting sign, and actually even a billboard. So many areas in the village, if you're familiar, have many different types of signs. So hence their sign law has to address those. In fact, this sandwich board here is, is, is used for this business onsite. And then this sandwich board is referring to a, a business offsite. So this would be an off-premise sandwich board sign, so if you can really get your head around it. Here's another example of signs for the artisans, which has a projecting sign and almost like a roof sign here, some window or wall signs, and then a sandwich board sign. So even one business can have a multitude of signs that are, are being addressed. So even one business can have a, a multitude of signs that are, are being addressed. Um, and you can see with this shot, it, it's narrowing the sidewalk effectively with that sandwich board placement. So we, we've established some rules about that, uh, in, in the amendment. Um, here's another shot, uh, of a, a, a building sign, uh, then a freestanding on the same property. And then here we've got some billboards on, on a, another building and almost like a roof sign to project above the roof line. And there's a sandwich board too, um. So what we did, uh, as a village, they determined what the business zones were, which is the B business, obviously. And then the marine development zone here, that's the other type of business zone that they have. So using these colors, we made a table that establishes the review process for each type of sign in the table. Um, so in your residential zones, which are the first three here, the blue and the yellow, uh, many of the signs aren't allowed anymore. And, um, then in the business and marine development zone, you, you, obviously more, more signs are allowed. And obviously it's the commercial zone, so you would expect that. And, um, the, as I said, the temporary signs are allowed uh, without a planning board review. Um, so this is sort of, we were trying to simplify this because right now whatever reviews are required or whatever standards are in place, they're throughout the law and they refer back to a previous zoning district and that one refers to another one. It's very hard to use, but we tried to really aggressively make it easier. Um, so these are the definitions that we added. Um, the three underlying definitions are in their law now. But then all the other ones are new, new definitions. And, and again, also trying to address new signs that maybe weren't envisioned back when they were regulating signs, uh, years ago. Such as, um, mobile, mobile signs and mobile electronic billboards. It would be an example of a new, new type of sign that we wanna regulate moving forward. And those would be the, the running board trucks, uh, with the electronic billboard on them. Running Board is one, one, uh, company that does that locally. So you, you can see that even just the definitions, we're really broadening our reach with the signs. Um, so we, we established this, a statement of findings, purpose and intent. I, I won't go through this. This was in your copy that you saw. But we, we really wanted to be clear about why we were doing this. That signs can obstruct views, distract motorists, boaters and pedestrians. And, um, they, they can displace alternative uses for land and pose other problems that legitimately call for regulation. So this is a series of statements that explains why we're doing this with the signs. And then these are the next set of findings where they're intended to promote compatibility uh, with the use of the property, with the landscape and the architecture of surrounding buildings and be appropriate to the activity which they pertain. And try to ensure that they do not distract, uh, greatly to motorists, boaters and pedestrians. Um, and, and so on and so forth. Ensure, ensure that they're maintained. Uh, that was another big thing was maintenance. Um, and I, I won't go through the rest of this, but you, you get the idea. We're very specifically calling out the reasons we are doing this and trying to improve the situation in the village. Um, so here we have a slide that just demonstrates, they have a series of signs that not require planning board review. And, and they're listed there, um, and most of them are the temporary signs. And there's an exempt set of signs and then some prohibited as well. Um, and then they're in the copy that you saw or you may have seen. Then there's signs that require planning board review. So those are more of the advertising sign nature that are permanent, such as billboards, uh, and all the other signs I was mentioning earlier with, with examples, including off-premise signs. So off-premise signs are no longer allowed in the residential zone. Um, i- unless there is a pre-existing sign that is currently being used. Abandoned signs will, will not be allowed to um, exist beyond a certain timeframe once they're abandoned. Because again, there's quite a few signs in the village that are not, the businesses aren't open, they're still standing. They're falling down, they're overgrown, they're, they're, they become eyesores and hazards. And those are things that they wanna try to cut down on over time if they can. Um, so, um, th- this is kind of where we are, you know, we're, we're dealing with a lot of different sign types with this. And, um, gonna keep going here. So this is some of the construction standards, like they wanna have signs in proportion to the buildings if they can or in the right places. But, um, they'd like to have signs that are lower and easier to read for pedestrians. And, and, uh, so this is an example of that with the one, the two-story buildings that have the, the signs in these places here. And, um, this, uh, to the right is another example of a projecting sign and a flag and then a, um, window sign. So these are, they don't dominate the buildings, um, in these examples anyway. That, this is what they would like to see. It does call out for a permanent process that's very uh, prescriptive because they don't really have a good one now. So we, we probably went a little overboard, but so, um, calling out for a sign, a sign plan, um, not just the location. And then, um, various procedure enforcement, severability clauses. But this is another example of where they would like signs that the name of the business is the dominant feature. And if you, like, for example, if you sell shoes or boots, um, we'd like the, the brands to be a smaller feature on the sign so that you, you're highlighting the name of the business or, or the local, um, asset that you wanna promote. As opposed to just a Coca-Cola sign that happens to have the diner on the bottom. You know, that's another example of what they would like to see is, is this type of thing on the bottom. Um, let's see, I mi- I might've gone a little quick there. But let me go back a second.
Andy, is there any? Andy, is there any kind of grandfathering in this thing, uh?
There is, there is. There's a existing non-conforming sign section.
Oh, okay.
Which is, it spells out when things are, um, you know, they can exist as long as the businesses are operating that the sign is, um, is advertising or locating.
Yeah.
Uh, once, if, if they happen to be to, if the, if a year-round business, um, does not operate any longer, there's a time period when the, that sign will be considered, um, not allowed anymore. So there, there's like a grandfathering type of thing. Um, and then with seasonal businesses, the period is longer because they're not used every winter. Uh, you know, the number of businesses down there are, are seasonal. So the time period for those to be potentially removed is longer. Um, so that you're, you're essentially not using it for a, a year, um, because, you know, if you operate for three months, that's ten or nine months, you're not operating. So we had to have a different standard for that. Um, so that, that's an example. So they are allowed to, to have non-conforming sign, yes. As long as they're operating or being used.
How about this change of ownership or, or that type of thing?
Um, change of ownership never interrupts land use, um, rights. So the use is run with the land. So the sign, it doesn't matter if you sell it or not. Um, the key is if it's abandoned.
Okay.
And we define abandoned, um, and so that it's, it's spelled out in the law, um. Because again, you know, Pine Tree Point is a case where the sign, the, the sign is still up. It's an off-premise sign in a residential area. And it has not operated for over 10 years. Um, I don't know exactly the date, but, um, so that's one of the, there's a number of those in the community. And they, they're considered eyesores and, and hazards. So they'd like to get their handle on those and obviously the village attorney will, will weigh in on this and make sure that, um, that we can, um, do this legally. But they've really, uh, tried to be conscious about what they're doing. And, um, like with the sandwich board signs, that's, that's another hot point in the history of the village. They've tried to redo their sign law a couple more times before this, previous to this. And sign, with sandwich board signs was one of the times that the, the opposition to regulating them ended up, um, you know, ending the, the effort to update the sign law. The village board didn't adopt the changes because of the opposition. So, but in the, in our case, in this time, we, we looked at, um, ADA, the handicapped, um, requirements, the federal ADA, uh, requirement for access along a, a sidewalk or just, you know, for wheelchairs and, and other, uh, strollers and so on. And so we incorporated some of those standards that the ADA established um, into their sign, their sandwich board regulation. Um, what, what we're calling for with the sandwich boards is that they need to be near the entrance, but they have to be against the, the, um, wall of the business or, and tethered and, and have a free six feet of clearance so that two wheelchairs could pass, um, in, in the case of their location. So in, in this case here, I don't think they would be allowed to have that sandwich board there. Um, and I'm not sure about the tr- the trash receptacle too. It looks like they both would impede, uh, pedestrians. And, um, so that's just an example of where they would real, th- this is why we're doing it, to try to make it more open for all pedestrians. Um, I'm trying to find another one here. Um, so it's not a good picture of it, but this one here, again, is, the sandwich board is not near the building. It's out here and it would impede, um, two wheelchairs from passing, I think. You know, you, you get out the tape measure and test it. But in their case, the, the five and dime or the ice cream place, there, there may be a spot near the bench that, that could be placed, uh, more safely and not impede traffic. So those are the types of discussions we've been having for the past few months. On how do we allow sign, sandwich boards still while enhancing pedestrian movement? And so that's the challenge we've been facing.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any board members? Is there anybody from the village?
Okay.
Okay.
So our staff, um, report, uh, we, we sort of highlight that New York State Village Law requires zoning amendments to be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And the, their plan, which was adopted, I think, last year, um, addresses abandoned signs, as I was saying, improving aesthetics in the village, including, uh, effective sign communication. Um, so they, they feel like all these distracting signs and abandoned signs that don't pertain to any current businesses and so on, um, dilute the messages that are trying to be put out there by the sign authors. And so if we can work on that, it can increase the communication and make it a more effective relationship among the businesses and the users of the community. And, and also addressing off-premise signs as well.
Okay.
And so then, David, do you have a question?
No, I was gonna say, you all set? I'm gonna ma- make a motion then. If, if we're ready, you can approve. Excuse me?
I didn't, I didn't finish the local comment.
Alright, good. I'm sorry.
Um, so we, the, under local, we indicated that, um, they should look at the sandwich board sign locations that are stated in the law. But they may need a diagram to make it very clear where the six feet is and access for pedestrians and maybe how that, um, three feet within the public or within three feet of a public building entrance, how that looks on the ground, just to make it easier to administer for the zoning officer. And then, um, lastly, um, wh- what happened with this was we were advised by one of the former town, uh, village board members, and he was a mayor or a candidate, that we should use Lake Placid, um, their sign regulations and Old Forge's sign regulations. And we also used a few other examples of resort community regulations to create this. And when you do that, you, obviously it's not perfect, you know, we, we tried to make it fit the Village of Alex Bay. And we tried to make things a cohesive law. And in, in doing that, sometimes you may not have the wording quite perfect, or there might be a conflicting standard or definition. So we're just noting here that they should try to limit those or remove those potential conflicts when they, um, go to adopt this. So, um, that, that's just something that we're highlighting that could be an issue. So as the staff were going through it and trying to identify those for the village to consider as they, as they, um, reach the potential adoption point. That's all I had.
Okay, so. Any questions or comments? Okay, alright, as, uh, okay. My staff has made recommendation that the Jefferson County Planning Board approve, uh, the sign regulations and zoning law amendments, uh, with the establishment of standards or including, uh, limiting commercial signage within the residential areas. Make that motions or second? Who's out there? Charlene again? Good. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Andy, do we still have a, uh, a quorum here?
Um, let me check. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six. Yes.
Okay, is, is, is Ark still on the phone with us?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, well, as long as you, as long as you say we got six, okay, good.
Yep, I'm counting six.
Okay.
Okay, so the next proj- did I speak out of turn?
No, you're still, keep going, page two.
Okay.
Yep.
So the next project is in the town of Houndfield. And, um, it is proposed by Reban Holdings LLC. Uh, it's right here. We, we saw this almost two years ago as a construction office for Ricky Martin and his construction company. That's what we saw as a proposal. And, um, what they ended up building was not that. They built the wrestling club venue. So that's what they're proposing now, is a youth wrestling club venue to include wrestling practices and three to four tournaments per year. So in the, in the past, almost two years, the town has sort of been going back and forth with the fact that the, the other youth was established and it resulted in traffic, uh, parking along Route three on both sides. And the town felt that was dangerous, so they wanted him to come back in and, and do this, which is the actual proposal for what's happening. And so now this is what we're seeing. And so that's on, uh, one, seven, six, one, two, New York State Route three. Um, and it's right there, just past Jericho Road going towards the city. And so this is where it is. Sorry, this isn't labeled, but this is Route three. Um, and this is Jericho Road. So it's just here. Uh, this used to be a long time ago, like a archery range inside, and then it was a shooting range indoors. And then later they had, uh, U-Haul trucks for rent. And this wasn't like a trail, a, a double wide here. It's now the cement pad, or it was. This is an old aerial now. Uh, but this is what it looked like back then. So, and then I, I zoomed in here, but now this is today or last week. Um, so he built a, a pretty big addition on the back and redid a, all this, um, and established. Now there's three entrances on Route three. That's going through the DOT process. They want to allow one. Um, but, so you saw it was one over on the left and then this is the one in the middle, which is, I would consider this to be law. I would consider this to be large. And, um, so this is how, you know, cars are about sixteen, eighteen feet long. So this is quite a bit longer than this, this car. Um, so it's very wide. And then, um, this is one that he's recently added when he did the gravel and there's a culvert. So the discussions with DOT have been about the fact that you really should have one entrance, but DOT said you could have two if they're one in and one out. So, um, I'm not sure where that's gonna be resolved with DOT, but that's definitely something, the way this is proposed, it's not a very safe environment. Too much access to and from with a fifty-five mile an hour highway. So here's, um, the building as I showed with the photos. They're showing, um, lights. Oh, this one got moved. They're showing lights on the building. Uh, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And, um, these c- circles illustrate the, uh, light, um, wh- where it spreads to. So it's, most of these are fine, but this one here goes out into Route Three pretty far, like almost to the other side. So I'm, I'm, I have a comment about that one. And this sign here, right here, is proposed to be in the right of way on, and that's not allow. In fact, there's a fifteen foot setback, so we have a comment about that. And maybe it would go here or here. And they're showing a sep- a septic system that they've, um, deter- uh, they've worked with the code office, I think, and, um, it should handle what they're expecting for visitors, but they're proposing sixty-six parking spaces, uh, through here. And, um, which is a lot more, more than there were. Uh, so I'm hoping that's enough. That's another comment. Um, so, oh, I forgot, it's in the agricultural residential zone. It's also in the arterial protection or arterial corridor protection overlay, which was established when the town, uh, created a water district out there. So, um, there are some additional landscaping standards. And parking is supposed to be in the side and rear in that zone, so they're, they're doing that. Um, but I'm not seeing any landscaping at this point. So my are, that the county, um, or the state, whoops, I'm on the wrong page. Hang on a second. Okay. That, uh, DOT highway work permit is required for the change in use and modifications and increase the number of ingress egress drives to the parcel. And they've been corresponding and working with DOT, but I'm not sure, again, how this will be played out with the, those entrances. Um, also based on the amount of disturbance, I was estimating that it looks, it, it appears to be over an acre. So a stormwater pollution prevention plan should be completed based on New York State DEC requirement. Um, then locally, um, this use is not mentioned in the zoning law yet. So we were saying that the local boards should discuss what land use category the proposed wrestling center could be considered under the zoning law. I will say the town is looking at a zoning amendment and they're looking to define this use. They, they're gonna call it, uh, public and private recreation, um, forget the other terms. But it would apply, and they, they will allow it in this zone, but that hasn't been adopted yet. So they need to work that out. Um, also, local board should ensure adequate parking is provided for events based on whether either the building size or seating capacity of the building where wrestling matches will be held. In no case should parking occur along the side of Route Three. And that's only because they've been doing that before. So we, we'd like that to not happen again because it's not safe. Um, also with the amount of impervious surfaces, uh, drainage facilities should be provided to ensure that the increased stormwater runoff will be accommodated on site. Um, as I was saying, this is a pre- a pretty big addition that was built. And right now this is gravel, um, but I, I, I wasn't sure if it was gonna be paved at some point. Um, but gravel can be compacted as well over time. So they, they should really address the stormwater. Um, and then the town engineer should do that, uh, to review that as well. Um, and then landscaping, uh, in corridor, um, protection overlay, they have standards for buffering adjacent properties and the Olympic Trail City Byway, so I, I, I think they should have some landscaping. Um, and then the light in the front of the building also, that should be shielded to avoid the impact onto the Ru- state road. Um, and then lastly, the sign in the right of way, that this, it should be moved to, to meet the town sign step, setback of fifteen feet. That's all I had.
Any board members, questions, comments? If not, I'll make a ma- recommendation that this is a project of local concern only and to return to the applicant with our comments. Motion made, or seconded, somebody?
Second, Lisa.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. One last one, Andy, go to it.
Yes. The town of Larray is proposing a sign law, uh, amendment. And I know, I know I didn't send this out to you guys, but it, uh, we'll see the text of it in here. It's a, it's a small amendment. But it deals with exemptions and temporary sign, uh, temporary signs throughout the town. So it's a townwide amendment, um, and, uh, so it deals with the whole town. So i- it, it's really addressing temporary freestanding signs. And so it, it, it mentions here that if they me- meet the requirements of this section, which is on the next slide, then they're exempt from permitting. So it kind of gives it a, uh, you know, it, it's one of the ways to do things is if it meets the law, you don't have to go through a review. So it kind of falls on the zoning officer, um, but, so that, that's what they've done. And then, um, if it doesn't meet the requirements, then it has to go through these two sections. Um, so that's kind of how they, they're gonna make it work. So the law has, uh, oh, tha- there's, there's non-residential districts in the town, and then there's residential districts. And in their law, it says that the R1 district is the residential district and all the others are non-residential. Now, I, as a personal thing, I, I don't really agree with that, but that's how they're, it's stated already. So these clauses for freestanding signs, the top three deal with the non-residential districts, so that's almost all the districts. Uh, and then, so you're allowed a freestanding sign, one of them per property and is not counted in the total square footage of the permanent sign, signage allowed. Um, a- and again, they, they may be up to this si- uh, size to thirty-two square feet. And they can be there no longer than ninety calendar days. So if they meet those, then there's no review. And then in the residential districts, obviously it's a smaller amount of square footage, but it's a similar idea that you can have any number of them if the total square footage does not exceed that, eight square feet. And then a- again, the ninety days is still, um, in effect for that, those dis- that district as well. And that they're not allowed in the right of ways. So those are the rules they're establishing. And then the, so that one residential zone is the R1. But I, I would argue the AR zone is a, is more of a residential zone than a commercial. But that, that's for another day, this, this discussion. And the mixed use so, a- as well, that's a residential walkable zone that has some businesses allowed. I would argue that's a mi- a residential zone as well. But I'll, I'll pick, I'll, I'll get with them on that during our planning process for the town plan and potential zoning update someday. Um, so that's what I had on that one. Oh, I'm sorry, there's comments, right? Yeah, so the state law requires zoning amendments to be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And, um, I'm not aware if there's a, a sign plan or an idea for this um, beyond just the discussion phase of the, the town. You know, our office is working with them on a comprehensive plan, but we're only about halfway through. So we've not really talked about signage at, at our committee level. So maybe there's some staff or other uh, members who are discussing this, but I'm, I'm just not aware of it. But that, that's all I had.
Any other comments? If not, I'll make a motion that this is a project of local concern only. And with the one comment to be referred back to the applicant. Motion made, is there a second? Somebody out there? John? Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Andy, we got two, uh, money projects.
Yes. Yes, um. Oh, I'm sorry, for Larray, they also allow two menu board signs for each drive-through restaurant. Um, that, that's part of this as well. Um, sorry about that. I forgot to click it once more. Um, and so moving to the intergovernmental reviews, so the town of Lyme is proposing, and it's, it's over here, they're gonna put the town offices here, um, near their ball field, I think. And then a- also near the, um, bus garage right now, the school bus garage. And then also their, their village or the town highway barn will be located out here. So it's, it's two projects, but they're right next to each other. So it's just outside, uh, Shemol. Um, so here's the project layout. Um, the proposed municipal building location is here. And it'll, it'll be the town office. They're also gonna have village office space within the project. I'm just not sure about the negotiations and when, when or if that'll happen. But they're, they're constructing it with that in mind. And, um, the highway barn will be over here. Um, so it's the two, the two projects, um, keep replacing that file. Um, but in your packet is the, um, the details. Um, you know, one is, uh, I think four million dollars and then the other one's three point nine or or four point seven, two point nine, you know, something like that. Those are the, oh, here it is, I'm sorry. Yeah, so three million for the, the highway garage, uh, roughly. And then, uh, four point seven for the new town offices. But I don't really have a breakdown other than the total. So.
Okay. Well, it's always been our policy to have the planning department send a letter of support for those projects. Everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Andy?
Um, no, I, as I said, I'll, I'll mail out or I'll email out that letter from the neighbor of the French Creek Marina. Um, I, and I, I spoke to her at length. But, um, somehow she wants a do-over with the review for us, and I, I'm not, I'm not aware of that ever happening before. So, um, you know, maybe an Article seventy-eight would help, I'm not sure.
Don't, don't suggest that to her.
Well, you know, I mean, if they didn't follow the referral process with a, with a change, it could have been a major ch- I don't know if it's a major change or not. And then she was saying how there's a lot of misleading statements and so on and so, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay.
You know, as you know, we can't really second guess every step that everybody takes.
If it's a twenty-six page letter, uh, it's gonna take us a long time to quote unquote, read it, so, uh, send it out to us and we'll put it on the agenda for next month.
Okay, okay. All right, um, that's all I had.
Okay.
Um, oh, maybe, maybe I should talk about this, though. The next meeting, um, you know, we use these meetings virtually, or we do them virtually with, uh, caveat from the state that allows us to do that with the emergency situation that we have. And I don't know if, if they don't extend it, uh, Mike was saying it would take a co- the county to, um, establish a local law outlining the reasons why we want to continue doing that and how, how we would still meet the open meetings law. And, and I, he's not really thinking the county's gonna do that. So we, we may end up with a situation where we have to go back to in person. So I'm just sort of talking about it a little bit more. I know we, not all of us could commit to that, um, but we, we may be in a situation where we don't have a choice. So just, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. If you want to talk about it, that's probably helpful. If not, we'll just learn about it as we go.
But, uh, it's easier to get a, a quorum for a virtual meeting as opposed to a, an actual meeting, but, um,
Yeah.
You and Mike can work that out with, uh, the county legislators and see what we have to do.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Getting ready, Lisa. Lisa, go to it.
Okay. Seeing how the ice cream, cream truck is going by and it stopped right out front, so you probably can hear the music, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I see a lot of hands for second. All those in favor? We are adjourned.
Aye.
Okay, thank you people.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience and everything. We're all set then, okay?